On behalf of the town of Silver City and the city council, I am calling this meeting to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and follow an act of salute to the New Mexico State flag. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Free Palestine.
Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico.
The symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. I would like to welcome members of our town administration here tonight. Our manager, Alex Brown, our attorney, Jim Reynolds, our town clerk, Alfred Sodio, acting town manager, Jackie Olaia, acting community development director, Randy Hernandez, Chief Portillo, and code enforcement officers. I also welcome all of you here tonight, and we have quite a turnout, and we're glad to see that. Good to hear and see the democratic process in motion. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anybody want to make changes to the agenda? No changes. Next is ceremonies, and there are none. Next is proclamations, and there are none. Next is council comments. First on the list tonight is Councilor Prince.
No comments this evening?
Thank you, Councilor Prince. Councilor Canno.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm having a few comments this evening. First, I wanted to talk about the Warming Center again, because that's my favorite subject lately. I want to thank everyone in the community. I know there's a lot of people in this room that follow this category who have provided donations, who have provided time, who have provided just support of the Warming Center. The Warming Center had a very successful first season. We ended the season, the evening right before that we closed, we had 67 people. That's 67 people who didn't freeze to death. That's how we see it, and we're thankful for that. We're hoping to continue this Warming Center in the future because it was very necessary. It did help a lot of people. I've been sharing stats the last few times. We had three people get jobs and two people find housing, permanent housing. So to us, that was a win. So again, thank you to everyone who volunteered in any way to help us with that. On Saturday, May 10th, I will be having my Territorial Charter Day project. My project will be a Battle of the Badges. So the Silver City Fire Department, the Silver City Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and emergency medical services from the hospital will all be participating. It will be awareness games, and it will be on Pope Street. So there will be live music, there'll be free food, there'll be some vendors, and the EMTs, the Sheriff's Department, the police, and the fire will be participating. Awareness games, to me, means they're going to learn what it's like to be a disabled person in several different ways, and I think it's going to be really a great experience for them. It's going to be a great experience for the community, so hopefully everyone will join us there. It'll be from 11 to 4 again on Pope Street in front of Q's and Mix, so there on the corner. I recently had the opportunity to participate in National History Day. I was a subject for one of the teams that participated. They are talking about accessibility, which made me very happy. I would suggest if the rest of the council is interested to get involved with National History Day, those kids are amazing. They asked some really good questions, things I hadn't thought about that needed to be thought about, so I would get involved if I were you guys. I also attended the Heeler Regional Town Hall, which was presented last evening by Commissioner Eddie Fuentes. Thank you to Commissioner Eddie Fuentes for doing that. He led a really good discussion. A lot of people gave input. The commissioners were listening. I'm sure they're going to take some of the things that they heard and make the hospital even better. The last two things, some of you may have noticed I'm wearing a kidney pin. March is National Kidney Awareness Month. For those of you who don't know me personally, that's a pretty big deal for me because I am on the kidney list, the transplant list. There are several members of our community who also are, so I would encourage anyone who is interested in being an organ donor to just type it in online, and the instructions to do that are there. Also, April is Donate Life Month, so if you're not an organ donor when you renew your driver's license, I would hope that if you are able to do that health-wise, that you would consider doing that because it really does save lives and it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ben Como.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments myself. My wife and I attended a tour of the Future Forge maker space located at 307 H College Street. Their primary focus is both technical and recreational skill building, do-it-yourself enthusiasts. They also host classes and trainings. Anybody that's interested in sharing a skill, they're more than welcome to have you guys come in and share that and learn things. Some of the things that they do there is metalworking, laser cutting, woodworking, sewing, jewelry making, and I did say a major class of welding occurring. Tours are on Saturdays at 12:00 p.m. I would invite the public to check that out. On April 3rd, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in Deming, the public is invited to attend the renaming of the New Mexico State Police District 12 field in honor of Officer Darren Jarrett, who was killed in line of duty on February 4th, 2021. So if anybody is intending and supporting that community, that'd be great. Again, it's April 3rd, I believe that's a Thursday, at 9:00 a.m. I've gotten a few calls regarding some flags that have been pinned upside down on houses and being flown upside down. You know, it's pretty tough when I have to explain, when I have seventh and eighth graders come up to me and ask me, what does that represent? And so I do my best to share that information with them. Those that are not aware, the practice of flying the flag upside down was used by ships that were in distress and only much later have become a symbol of political protest. I know it's your public, your First Amendment right to do things like that, but I think we need to think how we're influencing kids in general. I've also received a couple of emails regarding a department head and some of the personnel, some accusations in those emails. If you don't have the courtesy to write your name on that email, don't expect me to take the time and effort to respond to those emails or take them seriously. I would encourage you, if you have any concerns or complaints, have the courage to write your name down. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, I was really surprised and disturbed when I saw some aerial fireworks in town. It cannot be as stressed enough that things are really dry and are going to get drier as summer approaches. Please be careful with fire, and I would also remind people that Silver City is in stage one fire restrictions as of March 12th. This means no campfires and no open burning of yardways. Let's keep Silver City safe and be careful with fire, and please refrain from lighting, igniting fireworks.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting of March 11th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Prince.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of our regular meeting of March 11th, 2025.
Is there a second? Councilor Snyder.
I second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the list is public input. I want to make a few comments before we start. Please turn in your written comments to our clerk, Alfred Sodio, after the meeting so he can include them in the minutes. By city and council resolution, the maximum time for public input is five minutes. However, there's a rider on that, and it says that each person can only speak to the same topic one time. Now, we have a lot of people who have gone to a lot of trouble to be here tonight, and I know you want to speak on a topic you've spoken on before, so I'm going to give you the opportunity to do that, but we're going to limit you to three minutes. So you already know what you want to say, so say it as concise as you can. However, I know we have some other people here tonight who want to speak on another topic, and I will give you the five minutes. Now, the resolution gives the mayor the latitude to make these adjustments. So first on the list tonight is Chief Freddie Portillo.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm here to speak about NOI 1335, Community Advisory Board. I'd like to start off by reading our mission statement. The mission of the Silver City Police Department is to provide services with integrity and dedication to preserve life, to enforce the law, to work in partnership with the community, to enhance the quality of life in the town of Silver City. I believe we're already striving to work in partnership with everyone in the community to come up with solutions to overcome challenges that our community faces. Now, are there areas that we can all improve on? Absolutely. I have met with several citizens, and many of them are in the crowd today, who have great ideas and want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. I've had a personal experience where a family member of mine has been a victim of violent crime, revictimized, and the justice system has failed her more than once. Now, we could talk about the justice system for hours, but quite frankly, this isn't the time or the place. However, as a citizen of Silver City, a law enforcement officer, and a brother to the victim, you can imagine how frustrated my family and I were and still are. We should all focus on working together to foster change and help the community at large and victims of senseless crimes feel protected. We have worked so hard to get away from the us versus them concept and take steps forward towards building stronger relations and community policing. Councilor Snyder and Councilor Prince, as I understand, you are both big advocates for an advisory board, and you have been for quite some time now. While I believe the continued efforts of an advisory board has only hindered our ability to move forward in the right direction, not to mention, in my opinion, it is creating division, tension, and fear in our community. I have met with members of the committee several times over the last several years. Every time I ask the question, what are you experiencing or seeing out there that I might be missing, that an oversight or an advisory board is needed? There have been no facts to support or justify the need for an advisory board, rather reopening wounds that affect families, police officers, and close friends by speaking about an incident that occurred in 2016 and that we have taken accountability for. What's even more disheartening is when we are willing to compromise, keep an open mind, and work together. Only to hear from my officers who have recently attended meetings with this group to come back and report that this group has made it very clear, it's an ordinance or nothing. In our last work session, I spoke about our community already providing oversight, which in my opinion still stands true. Upgraded technology to include social media platforms, removal of qualified immunity, and stricter laws have already made it a little bit more difficult to recruit.
Chief, your time is about up.
I just have a little bit more, Mayor, if I would, please. I'd like to finish. I'm almost done. Recruit, retain, and do our jobs effectively. While we understand that things are out of our control, we have a great deal of pride in serving and protecting our community we live in. Let me remind everyone, families of law enforcement officers also live in our community and surrounding communities, and we want nothing more than to provide good quality service. Now, I've said this many times before, and I will continue to say it because it's the truth. I work for the community. I will continue to work for the community, and we will always put the community first. This decision lies in your hands, and I'm confident you will make the right decision for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, how y'all doing today? It's a beautiful day, right? So I'm here a little bit to talk about community engagement. I would like to take a moment to reflect on our journey and how we've made our community engagement a top priority in our department. Over the years, we've worked hard to build stronger connections with our community, and today I'm excited to share how we've evolved in many ways to be a part of it. Our community engagement began with a simple but important realization. The values of building trust in open communication between law enforcement and the community. Several community members reached out to us seeking guidance on police work and how to handle calls for service. This opened the door for meaningful conversations and set the stage for relationships to continue to build today. As the need for communication grew, we started collaborating with a variety of local groups. We've participated with several churches. We've participated with several clubs, including the Kiwanis Club, the Rotary Club. We take part in other events and we worked really well with community partnership with childrens, the first born program during the summer months to provide guidance and support. One of the most important areas of focus for us have been youth engagement. We are proud to work with local schools to host events like Shop With a Cop, which has been really successful. Our partnership with La Flota Middle School allows us to provide a fun and safe environment for students during our annual Halloween trunk or treat. I'm really proud of our DARE program that Chief Portillo implemented in our agency, and it continues to be an integral part of our outreach, providing fifth grade students in all Silver Schools and Tri-City Schools with important lessons of making positive choices and staying safe. Additionally, during Law Enforcement Week, we always visit the schools to read to the students, engage in meaningful conversations about law enforcement and community safety. We've also been active in organizing and participating in local events like Codes for Kids, Toys for Tots. Initiatives have been huge success, helping ensure children to receive the warmth and joy they deserve during the colder months. Our Coffee with a Cop event continues to foster personal connections with our community members in a casual setting, allowing for open dialogue and trust building. Our local library has also been a fantastic venue for engaging with the community. We've conducted several presentations for both children and adults, offering insight into law enforcement, safety, and crime prevention. These interactions allow us to continue our mission of making law enforcement more approachable and understanding for everyone. That's all I got to say, guys. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Delphina Jimenez. The resolution, and I'm talking about the ordinance and the resolution with the cab. The resolution was replaced with an ordinance bypassing community input and law enforcement collaboration. It seems they are pushing a potentially flawless system, taking away community control and focusing, excuse me, and forcing acceptance. This undermines the try it and buy it approach. On February 11th, 2025, at the council meeting, Sharon Book Walter announced the Citizens' Advisory Board members, which included Stan Snyder, a council member. This dual role raises conflict of interest concerns, potentially compromising his impartiality. Stan Snyder should recuse himself from related voting. A council member with integrity, transparency, and accountability should recuse themselves from voting to ensure impartial decisions, making and maintaining public trust.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Pete Martinez. I was born and raised here in Silver City, New Mexico, and I would just like to say no to CAB.
Thank you, Mayor Ladner, town council members, town management officials, and the chief of police. My name is Allison Hirst, and I'm a resident of Silver City. Loyal citizens have created an ordinance to form a Citizens Advisory Board in order to foster trust and grow trust between the residents and the police force. I give my full support to Ordinance 1335 and the creation of a Citizens Advisory Board. I ask for the town's leadership to help foster trust between the citizens and the police department by voting to approve this ordinance for its one-year period.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, Chief. My name is Paul Leepmei, proud citizen, community member, and business owner in Silver City since 2010. I'm grateful to be here today and to share some perspectives, but mostly I'm here to point out very respectfully that things have changed. And what is everybody most fearful of? I had a couple of questions that I've pondered since the last meeting I came to talk about this. I've reached out to the chief of police, Freddie Portillo, Chief Portillo, also Sharon Book Walter, from the Committee for Community and Safety, Committee for Community and Safety, as well as an officer who used to work for Silver City PD, who had approached me about a job four years ago before going to work as a sheriff's deputy right here in Grant County. The questions and subsequent conversations I had with all three were full of conviction and shared experiences, and as Mrs. Book Walter called it, our common humanity. My first questions of Chief Portillo were age today. Answer is 37. Age when you were promoted to chief's position? 31. Where were you born? Silver City. Mission statement for Silver City PD? You've already heard that. Average age in your department? 35. Ethnicity breakdown? 80% Hispanic, 20% non-Latino? Then I asked him, did policing change after we came out of COVID lockdown? Yes, it did, with liability and police immunity. And to quote Chief Portillo, nobody wants to choose law enforcement as a career. I can only imagine how often you are solicited, chief, to further your law enforcement career in another community. Got two more pages of stuff to go through, but I'm limited to three minutes. So with that, I would like to remind the city council here tonight that Mayor Ladner summed this whole thing up as micromanaging the police department. This is our chance to put a stop to this and retain the Silver City Police Department that are probably weighing their employment options right now. Think about that. Look at Santa Clara. Look at Hurley, Las Cruces, Deming, Lordsburg. They're all having problems right now. We need to take this serious. Let's take this to a vote right now for retaining our folks in blue at Silver City Police
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, Chief. My name is Gabriel Ortega. I am born and raised and have resided in Silver City for over 50 years. As a native of Silver City, I do not see that this advisory board should be approved at all by our town council. We as residents have faith in our police chief to run our police department to the best of his ability and also have the utmost trust that you, city council, have done your duty to oversee any issues that arise. There should be no reason for a need to have an advisory board that will be micromanaging Silver City Police Department. Bringing in an outside self-serving group of individuals would not only be a slap in the face to you as a council, but to the department as well. I hope that you find it within yourselves to do the right thing and vote against this board. It is not welcome nor wanted by residents such as myself. Thank you for your time and allowing my voice to be heard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'm here in support of the CAB ordinance, 1335. Please let me know when there's like 25 seconds left so I can skip to the end. Thank you. I'm sure there's going to be other people speaking about the need for and benefits of this ordinance as well as against, so I'm going to use my time to address some things I've heard from people who oppose it. The first is that the CAB will let people who don't know how to do the job set law enforcement policy and micromanage, as been mentioned a couple times. This argument misunderstands the ordinance. The policies of the SCPD are determined by the chief, the town manager, and in a broader sense, the town council. Having a CAB would not alter this chain of command in any way. There would be voices added to the conversation, and the CAB's presentations to the council would be public record, but there's no language in the ordinance that says their recommendations must be followed. As to the lack of knowledge part, the CAB would be full of Silver City community members who have chosen to devote a chunk of their time to service, serving the town rather than themselves. Some of its seats have professional requirements. Will they have law enforcement experience? Possibly, though not necessarily. Does every town manager, every town council member, every mayor? What they will have is their own professional experience, their own personal experiences. They'll be able to call on the town manager and police chief for information, advice, and clarification. Furthermore, the manager and chief will select relevant training for CAB members. Other opposition to the CAB has been over issues of confidentiality. The ordinance takes that into account in various ways and keeps the flow of information going through the chief, who is aware of policies, procedures, and even officer safety issues that affect what can be shared. Public records requests regarding the CAB also flow through the SCPD. The CAB will encounter sensitive information, but that is inherent to any kind of third-party outlet for grievances. Members of the CAB are legally bound to confidentiality by the same code of ethics that is already in place in the town. One of the more provocative criticisms I've heard during previous public comment is that the CAB will represent some kind of agenda. This argument also comes from a misunderstanding of the ordinance. The board will have members nominated by each town council member. The ultimate decision of who is on the board is up to the mayor. As we can see from the debate and consideration of this ordinance alone, our councilors and mayor would not appoint a politically homogeneous board. The CAB will represent a diverse set of perspectives reflective of our community and conversation about a specific issue. The result of this kind of conversation tends to be pragmatic rather than ideological. It's been said that this ordinance disrespects the officers who serve our community. It should be noted that structural policy review is not the same as individual performance review. I don't doubt that the overwhelming majority of the time our officers are acting within established policies and practices. The CAB looks at policies and practices, not performance review. I hope I've covered some of the critiques of this ordinance, and they seem to stem from a lack of careful reading. There are far more valid reasons to vote yes than no, so I'm going to name some values and see if everyone here agrees on it, because I don't believe this is divisive. All right. I don't believe this is a divisive issue. We all agree on safety, accountability, and transparency. Thank you.
Amy Lockit.
Good evening, Council members, Mayor, staff, and police officers, chief. Thank you for this moment, a little bit of time to speak to you this afternoon. I don't have, I just have some small notes, and this is going for, against the CAB, the 1335 ordinance, which started off as a resolution, now going into an ordinance. Things are changing, becoming wishy-washy here. Where is this really going to go? You want us to be able to trust? If we truly trust, we have a police department who has a matrix, who has chain of command to follow up that goes into our city manager, then to you. We don't need a CAB. And if it doesn't have binding authority, we're wasting time, precious time that can weaken our police department, which then means that will be mine and everybody's safety in this community. Think hard about that, not someone's personal agenda and stuff in the background trying to use the incident of 2016 to get this in the door. We need to be real. You know, as elected officials, this is your job and your responsibility to oversee issues, transparency, that people are talking about. So don't pass the buck to a CAB. They weren't voted in here. That'd be voted by you, not the community. So take your responsibility back and do your job. And I believe there is personal agendas and vendettas against the police department in the background that are not being said and not being brought forth, that are being truly transparent. So I'm asking you to vote against, no, whatever your terminology is, against this CAB. Remember, our safety is most important to every person in this city, if they live here, if they're traveling, if they work here. By weakening this department, now our safety's going to become an issue, and then now the town's going to be, have more of a liability than the 2016 incident.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. My name's Ashley Castillo. I'm a native of Silver City and would like to express my concern for this new advisory board for the police that is being put forth. I am in disbelief of the lack of support from this communit, community for our local law enforcement. I think that it is a shame that we're trying to tell these officers how to do their already difficult job. These officers have to go through extensive training to be, even become an officer. I don't think that the people who are pushing this agenda are fully aware of what all these officers have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I think it's a slap in the face to what their job entails. What they need is our support, not someone who has no law enforcement experience or knowledge of the law to tell them how to do their job. It's so easy for us to point out the negative things, but how many of us have stopped to thank any of them, or at least give them a compliment for a job well done? Most of the time, they are understaffed, overworked, and have to pull double shifts to make sure that our town is safe. Even if an officer is on day shift, that doesn't mean that the job ends once they clock out. It's never-ending. To me, this board has no concern for these officers. They're only thinking of how they can make their job harder or impossible. Policemen should only be thinking of making it home safely to their families. I don't think anyone realizes the ties that a lot of these officers have to the community. A number of them have been born and raised here and have deep roots within its community. For example, Chief Portillo has three kids. Him of all people wants a safe community for his kids and for everyone to prosper in. I know a lot of our officers have kids and are involved with their sports, churches, or other community organizations. To say they are out of touch with the community is just plain blasphemous. I am truly saddened by this agenda this community has put forth. Policemen put their lives on the line every day to try and help others. The last thing we should be doing is making their lives harder. I, for one, feel safe when I see law enforcement around and have no problem showing my support for them. The SCPD also puts on numerous events for kids and are always looking for ways to strengthen ties with, within Grant County. My putting this advisory board forth, in my opinion, would be a step in the wrong direction. I think there are a lot of ways that we could build bridges between law enforcement and the community. Chief Portillo's door is always open, and I know he already has daily recommendations and complaints that come his way. I don't think we need a whole board to tell him how to handle those complaints. He's been in law enforcement since right out of high school and has had Silver City's best interests at heart always. I think we should have an appreciation board for the police officers that work tirelessly to keep our community safe. We should be building each other up, not tearing one another down. I think we can all do a better job of making the community as a whole better. Last sentence here. Let's find a different approach, one that is not degrading towards law enforcement and support them in protecting our community. And I just want to say that those who are against it and booing, they still will protect and serve the community no matter what your opinion is. Thank you.[978.81][978.81](APPLAUSE).
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
What?
Point of order?
Yes.
There are people in this crowd that are making comments while people are speaking and also booing during, when people are clapping. Could we please cut that? If you're not in support, just don't clap. When it's time for you to support your, your thought, then clap. But the comments that you're making outside of when someone's speaking, I can hear them. So if you would please stop.
Okay, let's move on.
Good evening. Thank you to the City Council members, the mayor, the department heads, and the staff for creating this space for us to have the opportunity to speak, to voice our opinions about the ordinance 1335. My name is Kevin Hirst, and I'm retired from a 27-year career after working for state law enforc, state law enforcement agency. I conducted compliance inspections on private and public entities regarding commercial vehicle operations. I had direct contact every day with the public representing my agency. One of the issues I noticed over my career was how the state operated in a reactive way to issues regarding changes in the law enforcement policies and training, rather than being proactive. Most times, I was required to have specialized training because a bad incident had occurred involving a citizen's death or mistreatment of someone, someone. Some of the training that conducted was about understanding, being prepared to deal with mental health issues, having the awareness of cultural diversity of our public. And most of the time, the state had to pay out multimillion-dollar lawsuits, and the trainings were part of that legal statement settlement, excuse me. So I, so let's be proactive rather than reactive. It saves time and money. I've read the ordinance and fully support it being approved tonight. It has specifics that address major concerns of the people of Silver City. One specific is the range of expertise in the board member requirements. Another is a clear section on removal and vacancy of board members in that they comply with the town's required code of ethics. And the ordinance clearly states that the board cannot involve themselves in the day-to-day duties of law enforcement officers or disclose any information that is not already in the public record. The Duties and Powers section has verbiage to promote research by the board to address the changes in our country and whether those changes have an effect within our city. The board will be researching the best support for our law enforcement personnel in education, safety, mental health, and legal liabilities. This will also allow the Police Department to focus on their, focus their resources on public safety and training as needed, reducing some of their workload. Yes, there are issues about document disclosures of contract agreements and the future hiring of a, of a police chief, but once again, that is not, anything is not a public record, shall not be disclosed by any board members. The ordinance is not locked forever. There shall be a review of this ordinance with one year, within one year, and it can be modified, or a second ordinance can be enacted to abolish it. In the two years I have been in Silver City, I have been welcomed, welcomed to this community by so many great people, but the common concern I've noted from people is how law enforcement policies and practices nationwide, nationwide, have recently changed and how the federal law enforcement is conducting in this nation and in this state.
Your time is up.
Okay. Anyways, I just, I just want to say, I hope you will consider this thing, because I think it's a win-win. Thank you for your time.
Hello and thank you. When I was here, the first time I spoke, I was speaking about the fear in the gay community. There is still a tremendous amount of fear. It is only growing with what's going on, but I want to cha, thank Chief Portillo, because after we spoke for that, Captain Hobbs came to a P flag meeting, young Officer David came to another P flag meeting, so he is making a real effort to try to reach out, to try to help with some of that fear, and that's only good. And if this ordinance was going to do any of the things that the people who are against it said it's going to do, I would be against it too, but that's not what it's for. No one in this ordinance, no one who's speaking for it, is trying to say, "We know what a policeman's job is. We understand it's stressful. We understand it's difficult." There's no way a civilian could understand what they have to go through. At the same time, with the couple hours of training the Police Department has, they don't understand what a trained social worker could do, someone who's trained in behavioral issues. They have 10, 20, 30 years of work, so the Police Department knows exactly what they can do, and they do a tremendous job. The behavioral people, the social people, they can handle the mental breakdowns. They can handle when someone's excited. They can handle to calm them down. Now, together, you put the police together, you put the social together, you would have a tremendously strong team. This ordinance would not tell the police chief what to do. I have started talking to people who are interested in this ordinance. We have almost 100 cards here, and I've just started talking to people, and they all want to tell me their story. Some of them are just kind of minor things, some of them are bigger. One of them that struck in my mind is a woman who was trying to report police being overly violent. This was before Chief Portillo came here, and the police chief at that time told her, "Well, maybe the officer was having a bad day." It is very natural for someone to want to defend their people. They're going to come at it as defending it. When someone's in their office, they're excited, they're upset, you automatically want to defend your people. I do it for anything I'm involved in. It's a normal reaction. But if these people who are upset can go to this community, this social advisory group, they can talk to someone there who can calm them down, they can then write the information down, they can give that to the chief, he can read it without being emotionally involved in it, and he can make the best decision. Now, that's very important. It will be given to the chief. The chief will be the one making the decision on what happens. This is not something he's told, there's no oversight to it, and I want people to realize, the public is aware of this issue. They want it. They are not going to handle, are not going to go with the resolution. They are going to demand an ordinance, and it's going to continue. So I would hope that people would get together. This is something that could help the city. That's all this is, is to give people who are intimidated to go into the Police Department where they're surrounded by guns and black shirts.
Thank you, ma'am.
And have somewhere else safe to talk. Thank you.
Thank you.[1453.73][1453.73](APPLAUSE). Ann Low.
I just want to say that I support ordinance 1335 and a Citizens Advisory Board.
Good evening, Council. I wanted to ask you all that what, what are you doing to keep our community and especially
I'm sorry, we can't have a dialogue, okay?
Okay. Well, let me tell you. Actually, you brought up an awareness event, and I think that's a great idea for downtown, that all of you come downtown and see how unsafe it is. So Sunday, it, I'm used to seeing loitering, uncomfortable, people stumbling, talking to themselves, yelling at people, whatever. But this time, this guy was dangerous, so I had to close early. And I waited for the little girl next door in the store all by herself that didn't want to close and get in trouble. I had her lock her door until she could call her boss and go home, and I stayed with her. I watched the guy as he broke into two cars. He and my boyfriend, I asked him to come down because I was worried. So he came down, and he saw him doing two drug deals. So it has not just become loitering, it has become dangerous for us. We have so many activities, like the Hila and, you know, the Blues Fest and the Tour de Hila, all that to get people here, but we're part of that downtown. And I always hear, is it safe to go here? Is it safe to go there? Getting asked for money, all that kind of thing, and people are intimidated. So I would like to have an awareness event and invite all of you. I can get stores for you to stay at. I think you should walk downtown, not just drive by. Just spend some time downtown, see how dangerous it is. So I'd like to clean that up. I have aesthetics, but that's way down on the list. So it's, it's just, it's become unsafe, and, you know, I'd like stuff to happen, you know? I've talked to stores, they'd be open to having security, like, to watch downtown for you to see. It, it's, the noise and ordinance are both from 10:00 PM. The noise and odor ordinance are from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That doesn't help us at all. I've had musicians next to me just trying to make music, and I don't have my music in my store loud enough, and I can't, I can't do it, I can't make it loud enough. So businesses are welcoming you. I can set you up with businesses, no problem. I encourage you all to have a meeting of how you're going to make it safer for us, and please tell the shop owners, we're all, I mean, I talk to people, and they're like, "Well, we're afraid to call the cops." Well, nothing ever gets done, so what's the point? I call when I hear someone screaming obscenities. The people that they're actually saying, "I'm going to F-ing cut you," they don't call, because they were like, "Nothing ever gets done." So without the full support, the police and fire can't do what they can to the best of their ability. So I would appreciate if y'all would get together, kind of figure something out. I'll give you my email, and we can set up who you can go with, and we can spend a couple days. So, thank you.
Good evening. It's a gorgeous evening in the land of enchantment. Chief Portillo, members of, of the council, 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 Councilor Conno, Councilor Prince, Mayor Ladner, Councilor Snyder, Councilor Bencomo, and the rest of you, thank you for being here tonight and allowing us to speak. And there are a variety of perspectives represented here tonight regarding the ordinance that's the Citizens Advisory Board, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak, that we can come together and respectfully share our thoughts. My name is Lori Rogers, and I was born and raised in Silver City. After graduating from Silver High School, I spent a number of years in Albuquerque. Five years ago, I moved back to Silver City. I have questions as well as concerns about this ordinance. What data was used to demonstrate and determine that there is a need for this ordinance? In addition to the processes already in place for addressing concerns, how much taxpayer money has been spent addressing the possible need for this ordinance? In other words, if you take Mr. Brown's salary and drill it down to an hourly rate and do the same with Chief Portillo's and and do the same with Chief Portillo's and Mr. Reynolds' salaries, how much money has been spent addressing this proposed ordinance? As a taxpayer, I'm concerned about the amount of money that's been spent as well as the human resources that have been expended. For example, how much time has Chief Portillo been pulled from his job? What about Mr. Brown and Mr. Reynolds? While it could be argued this is part of their job, it's concerning that they're not able to focus on the most pressing needs in Silver City, as there's already a process in place for such. If I may share something, I served twenty-eight years in public education. I was a teacher and served in other roles, and there were times I was pulled from my job duties because of those who believed they knew more than educators as trained professionals. This happens because almost everyone has had an opportunity to go to school and has been in school. This can give them the false belief they know what running a school or teaching in a classroom should look like because of that shared common experience. And of course, input is important and should be considered as public servants. There are processes in place for such. When an inordinate, a normate amount of time was spent addressing these concerns, it was a barrier of providing excellent education. Focusing on my number-one job, which was teaching and serving students, I was challenged by the time constraints of having to address these things that didn't follow the proper procedures. While it was part of my job to address concerns, it was still a distraction and took away time and energy from an already difficult job. Now, let's take a look at law enforcement. Those in law enforcement are also trained professionals. However, it differs because we don't have the common experience of being a law enforcement officer or being directly involved with what they deal with on a daily basis, unless you were a law enforcement officer or maybe breaking the law. Of course, input is important and should be considered as public servants. There are processes already in place for such. When there are concerns, there are already processes.
Ma'am?
That can be addressed. I have one more sentence, thank you. Two more sentences. How is it beneficial to add another layer that further bogs down the system? This ordinance would be an additional layer added to a system where financial and human resources must be maximized. There's a place, a procedure already in place. I respectfully ask you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you for the offer.[747.82][747.82](APPLAUSE)
Raoul Torrieta?
Thank you. My name is Raoul Torrieta, and this is going to be a halftime, just like March Madness. Don't you guys love March Madness?
Yes.
I want to thank you for having us. I am the president of the Silver City Museum Society, and I have a brief description on the situation that we're dealing with right now. The society has literally taken the high road, keeping this information off the media. We have ran out of road. We've had to break down a relationship. The director, a city employee, has served, has severed a thirty-nine-year relationship with the Silver City Museum Society. It is significant. It is a very, very bad impact to the community, just on the director's behavior. The director, a city employee, with the abuse behavior. It has been noted. This is a serious concern, especially when it happens a few times. Our complaint to the manager and the mayor didn't result in any meaningful change. Now, we're being banned from the museum. In January, the Silver City Museum Society was banned from the museum, which was a huge blow, especially since the society has funded a large amount of an average of two-hundred-thousand per year. Being excluded with the contribution that we have done, it feels very unfair. Initially, we faced significant difficulties, accessing our computer system, important files, which led to the delays of operations. After exhausting all avenues, we found it necessary to call a sheriff, the sheriff's office, to help us retrieve the necessary items. While this was unexpected, the challenges that we face, we are now functioning at our best capacity with our operations being managed in a hundred-and-seventy-five-year-old storage shed. Despite these challenges, we remain committed to uphold the responsibilities to the community and to ensure the services that we provide to continue to meet the needs of the society, and it is very difficult and caustic to continue to meet the needs for the museum. Issues of the museum recognition. We have been removed, the Silver City Museum Society, off the mensorean. It is, it has been a partnership and the respect that it seems it's been a breakdown. We have found that we have to take whatever step for the Silver City Museum Society Board feels it's necessary. Our town manager has been missing in action.
Torrieta, your time is up.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say we have ran out of, we have ran out of road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[966.76][966.76](APPLAUSE) Richard Miller? Richard Miller?
I just wanted to express my thanks to the Silver City Police Department. You've got an almost impossible job in today's political and, and policy environment. Thank you to those city council members who are standing up saying, "I'll do my job and not create another layer of bureaucracy." You know who you are. Thank you to the city manager. You've got a job to do, and you're going to do it, and we just don't need another layer. And I just wanted to express my support for the police and for the council and the management of the city. No, no CAB, please. Thank you.
Thank you.[1036.58][1036.58](APPLAUSE) Jason Lockett?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilors. My name is Jason Lockett. I wanted to take a moment to ask all of you to vote no to the citizens advisory board, especially those of you sitting up there with special interests. A cab for the, for the police, while intended to foster accountability and community involvement, will create a special agenda that weakens public safety by prioritizing specific interest groups' concerns over the broader community need for effective law enforcement. This can lead to decisions that may undermine police authority, diminish the resources necessary for proactive policing, or divert attention from critical crime prevention, ultimately compromising the safety and security of the community as a whole. Again, vote no to the cab. Thank you very much for your time.[1098.83][1098.83](APPLAUSE)
Angela Flanders?
I'm here to talk about a different subject than we've been talking.
Ma'am, could you speak directly into the microphone? Thank you.
I'm here to talk about something that we haven't been talking about, and it's not on your agenda, but I hope that it will be on your agenda sometime in the future, and that is about whether or not we should have dogs on leash on Boston Hill or off leash. And some of the things I'd like you to think about, because I hope this will be coming up in the future, are that dogs tend to be more aggressive and protective of their person on the other end of the leash than dogs that are off leash. We need to train our dogs to walk on leash, and I think it's really important to have them on leash around town and most places inside the city limits. But leash walking doesn't give dogs the kind of exercise that they really need to be healthy. And so I think it would be great if we had a place where they could run and really use up all the energy that they have. Dogs that are on leash, walking in a place like that can be a tripping hazard, and of course, when dogs are walking around town, they are used to the things that are going on around them, but they can be quite startled upon Boston Hill. People like me, an older person, needs to walk with a hiking stick, and having a hiking stick in one hand and a dog on leash on the other hand is quite difficult and I think dangerous, and I don't think we want to discourage older people or handicapped people from using Boston Hill with their dogs. Dog parks, some people say, "Well, take your dog to the dog park," but a dog park, especially our little dog park here in town, doesn't give most dogs, little dogs, yes, but not middle to large-sized dogs enough exercise. And I've included in my notes some reasons why dog parks are not that great, which you can look at later. We have five hundred acres and six entrances to Boston Hill, and I think it's just impossible for us to imagine that we could really afford to be policing that. And one of the rules that I learned when I was raising my kids, one of the cardinal rules is, "Don't make a rule that you can't enforce." And, and I'd also like to say that I have looked for incidences of dogs attacking people on Boston Hill or being a nuisance, and I haven't been able to find any. I know of one personally, but that's one in the twenty-some years that I've been here. So in conclusion, I want to say, "Why punish good dogs for what bad dogs do?" Thanks.
Thank you.[1321.86][1321.86](APPLAUSE) Rhonda Van Dran?
I'm sorry, I know, I know more of you than I expected, and I understand.
Rhonda Van Dran, could you speak directly into the microphone and speak to the council?
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry. I know that this is very complicated, and these always are, but, good evening, my name is Rhonda Van Dran, I'm a member, I'm the mother of a law enforcement officer. Like most of those graduating from our academy, he left for, he left the area for greater opportunities. Five minutes is very little time for me to express my concerns regarding the proposed ordinance to provide for an advisory board for our local police department. Driving any of our officers away by increasing their burden, their burden is one of my concerns. This is another, and it's posted, it's posted on their wall, and so committing suicide, so the poster says, "Too many cops leave the force by their own hand. Committing suicide is too common among the police officers." Because so many people do this, they have a joke about, "What flavor is your dipping sauce?" It's a hard group they are. I've spoken at length with my son about oversight and advice. This was his answer. It's a video of the murder of Las Cruces Officer Jonah Hernandez. There's narration, and it's, and it's short. I'll skip to when the officer reaches the scene and the officer's vest cam. He spots Silva quickly and walks toward him. At about ten feet, Silva closes the distance. You'll hear the voice of an armed unidentified past survive who stops the killer and then tries to stop the bleeding. Finally, another officer will call for help. It's graphic, and I guess I'm actually grateful that, there's no video.
The videos you're about to watch are horrendous. They're exceptionally difficult to see. If I were not required to release them under the Inspection of Public Records Act, I would not. One thing I want to see on the record is that Officer Hernandez did nothing wrong. It could have happened to any of us, including me. The first video you will see is a surveillance video from the property. He will track Silva as he sees the police unit at the intersection, and he moves to the canopy to wait for Officer Hernandez. He deliberately placed himself there to ambush Jonah. The second video is Officer Hernandez's body camera. The video starts when he's at the intersection of Valley and Ammar.
Beer discretion is advised.
You been staying here for a while? What's up? This is your place? So you're the one who called? You're the one who called?
Ma'am, your time is up.
I beg your pardon?
Your time is up.
May I, may I, may I wrap it up really quickly then?
Yes.
So you missed out. You missed out on the screams, you missed out on the blood, you missed out on the people that had to deal with it. Fortunately, there was an armed person and stopped it. We have a capable police chief. Let him choose his priorities, who to work with and when, and those, help them to success, help him to successfully serve those in need. Thank you.[1567.01][1567.01](APPLAUSE)
Brandy, Brandy Howdy?
Hello. If I could be given a twenty-five second reminder before my time's up, I appreciate it. My name is Brandy Howdy, and I'm a social worker here that serves our community. I've worked with law enforcement, and number one, thank you, Chief Portillo and the Silver City Police Department and Grant County Sheriff's Department, and again, council members as well for giving us the opportunity to have feedback. I am against the cab. I firmly believe that this is duplication of the processes in place. I believe that the comments about micro-managing and the concerns that have been brought up already are valid and are real. I already know, because I happen not just to be a social worker but a wife of a police officer, that their job, as you all know, is very dangerous, it's very difficult nowadays more than ever before. I feel that we already have a difficult time retaining current police officers for the city police department and recruiting. Now, when, when this cab is being suggested, I hope that you guys understand that who would want to work for a police department that has another layer of bureaucracy like a cab? I think to increase relationships with the police department, there is a process in place. There is procedures in place. There's a chain of command for a purpose. I think the only way to strengthen that is to encourage what that process is and be transparent of what it is so that the community members can use it. Why does it need a third-party board to third-party report these serious concerns, if there is any? His door is always open. And, like, they take those oaths seriously to, to protect and serve the public, and I just think that that should be something that you all consider, that this could be, create more challenges and concerns for, to recruit and retain current officers. I, I also think that due to, due to the increased scrutiny that they already have, they already overly feel scrutinized as it is. They go through academy and training processes, then they have a length of time where they have to do, on the job, to, there's, there's such thing as, you know, the academy and what they teach you, but then there's the realities of what community policing is. I really believe that in reading the ordinance, there were some concerns that I had, that they make efforts of who should be on this makeup of the board, but they say, "One position may be a police officer." Well, if it was pro-law enforcement, there should be a minimum, more than one, at least. And why wouldn't we want that perspective on there if it even, even if the cap, it did exist? So to me, that's concerning that the language says "may." It's concerning that it doesn't, there's a five-day process of when a complaint is given to the board that it goes to the chief.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay. I'm just going to just finish this a little up real quick. Okay? So I think that that is concerning. I also think that it's very difficult to understand how these members would not be biased and anti-police. I also feel like... I also feel like it circumvents the processes, and I also feel like it will weaken our community safety. Thank you.
George Carr?
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity tonight to address two issues of paramount concern for me, and those issues are trust and accountability. Tonight, you're presented with an ordinance to establish a citizens advisory board. It's intended to provide citizens an avenue to report police misconduct to an entity that is outside of the police. This is really the only material aspect of this ordinance. As you all know, if this right had been available to the citizens of this community in 2016, the GRT taxes paid in every transaction in Silver City would very likely be much lower. Since 2016, the city has made no proposal or offered any suggestion on how citizens' complaints can be made to somebody other than the chief of police. This ordinance has nothing to do with interfering or changing the manner in which discipline or other personnel manners are handled by the police. It has nothing to do with some form of sinister cabal emanating from supposed outsiders who know nothing about the cultural values of this community. It has nothing to do at all with denigrating the important and difficult work of police officers. And just so that the record is clear here, I've been on several ride-alongs, and I've had the privilege to represent members of law enforcement and to defend them, and they are still my friends. I don't know of any law enforcement officer who claims that every officer in every department is perfect and free from mental distress. In my opinion, it's in the interest of every police agency and of every community in which they serve to provide an effective means to stop things from getting out of hand. It is well past time for the council to give the citizens the opportunity to express their concerns to someone outside of the police department. In the final analysis, the voters of this community will recognize this as a simple matter of trust and accountability. If the effort of this body is to block any form of constructive criticism of the police, you will not build any form of community trust. Tonight, I ask you to do your jobs in good faith. You don't need to lie about the purpose and effect of this ordinance. You do not need to create chaos and division. Everybody in this community wants transparency and accountability in the city government, young, old, and from every ethnicity. Everyone in this building salutes the flag of New Mexico and perfect friendship among united cultures. You don't need to disparage and insult the motives of anyone because they just didn't have the good faith to grow up here. You simply need to do your jobs tonight in good faith. Thank you.
You know, what I've noticed is that when someone speaks to an issue, and I'm looking in the audience and I see somebody who I know is against that issue, you still applaud. I want to thank you for your courtesy to the speakers and to your decorum. I want to, we appreciate that. Next is Daniel Duran-Pais.
My name is Daniel Duran-Pais. I'm a New Mexico native, I was born in Santa Fe. I will be turning 68 soon, and have lived in Silver City with my partner Mark for three and a half years. We've been together almost 44 years. We love Silver City and would live nowhere else, especially considering the present political climate. We plan to spend the rest of our lives here. That being said, speaking one's mind and taking a strong stand is not always easy, and sometimes you have to fight for it. At last year's Tour of the Hila, I was wearing this T-shirt, which reads, "Boycott Israel, Free Palestine." While sitting on the bench at the bus stop near Adobe Springs, I was approached aggressively by an individual who started yelling at me, "You can't wear that T-shirt." Still sitting, I told him to get away from me and that I didn't want to talk to him. He kept yelling in my face, the same thing over and over again. As I tried to stand, he head-butted me and I went down, losing consciousness for a second. By the time I recovered, he had run about 30 or 40 feet north on Bullard. I flung my now-warm cup of coffee at him and missed him by a mile. I was still on my knees, disoriented, while Mark, seeing that I was seemingly okay, took off after the assailant with our dog chopper on leash. At that point, Tim Charles turned around and knocked his phone out of his hand and punched him in the eye. At the same time, I started standing up from a hands-and-knees position. All of a sudden, I felt a large set of powerful arms enveloping me. Thinking he was helping me up, I continued trying to stand. Suddenly, the body grip tightened, and using his upper body strength, he pressed down, and the dual pressure from trying to stand and being pushed down caused me to scream in excruciating pain. Being in a squatting position, he wouldn't let me stand up or go down. All of this time, I was screaming for him to let me go and asking what was he doing. I managed to turn my head, which was bleeding from the headbutt, and say, "You're hurting me, let me go." His response, "You just spit blood in my face, and I can charge you with assault." My first reaction was that he was a cop. In first rule, you don't fight cops. However, I realized that he hadn't identified himself as such and continued to struggle. All of this occurred while I was in extreme pain. He finally let me up. At the same time, Mark kept following the assailant, who ran into a building up Bullard Street.
Sir, your time is up.
That was a five minutes?
Pardon?
Was that a five-minute time?
Three minutes.
I thought I had five minutes. This is, I've never spoken on this subject before.
Okay, I misread what you were, sure, go ahead.
The cop showed up and located the suspect. This, I was relieved, thinking that the matter would soon be resolved. It turns out that the second assailant, who was supposed to be a volunteer at the bike race, an EMT on top of that. Upon explaining that the guy talking to two of the cops that assaulted me, one of the officers snapped at me, he was just trying to help. At that point, the officer interviewing me told me that I was being charged with mutual combat, or whatever the legal term is. He said that a witness stated that I had thrown the coffee first before being head-butted. I'm going to run to the end of this, and I'm going to say that if this person that assaulted me, the EMT, is at this event, I will press charges against him. And if he's at this event, me and my friends will start telling the people at the Tour of the Hila that they are in possible danger from the volunteer staff of the Hila. So I would advise this person to not come back to this town, and I would advise the cops to tell him that, because they know who he is, and they won't give me his name.
Mark Duran-Pais?
I'm the other half. Anyway, so there were a couple points. I followed Mr. Charles down the street, photographing him. He turns around, slugs me, knocks the hammer out of my hand. Anyway, so I continued following him at my own peril. I see the police running around the corner. They had been taking a break over at the parking lot there on College. And I followed Mr. Charles right up to the building where he went in, and the police dutifully went in. I said, "He's went that-a-way." And they went in and checked, came back out a minute later and said, "He's not in there." And I said, "Well, come on, let's get him. He's around back, probably going out the back door." "No, no, he's not there." And I'm like, "Really?" And so I start going around the building, and they go in the building through the front door and bring him out, right away, just like that. And so that was kind of weird. Then by that time, Daniel had managed to get up the street. He's bloody, you know, coming, his lips were cut, his nose was bleeding, and he had come up the street, and this guy is pushing him, like, trying to control him, preventing him from moving down the street, pushing him around, and he's the EMT guy. And we're just like, Daniel said, "I want this guy arrested, too." And the officer said, "Well, we can't arrest him because we didn't witness a crime." So we said, "Okay, so what do we do?" So we said, "You have to come down here and press charges on Monday." And I said, "Okay, this is Saturday, so it'll keep." And I said, "So what about this other guy?" "Oh, he's gone already." And I said, "Well, he's standing right over there." I said, "Well, let's just go and get his information." So I start heading down there, and this guy, oh, he's right here. The police officer says, "Let me handle this. You get any closer and I'll have you arrested." And I was like, "Okay, this is interesting." So anyway, so I took his picture, just to be sure, and left. And I got to say that I kept, that night kept us replaying the crappy treatment that we got from the cops. We were, Daniel was a bloody victim, I had been slugged, this guy had done it, and, you know, I know the cops didn't witness it, but, you know, it's just like, okay. So we went in and filed on Monday, and they wouldn't tell us the name of the EMT guy, but it turns out he's from Ruidoso. One of the police officers let it slip that he was an EMT from Ruidoso. So we know that much about him, and we will be there. And if he's there, we will be doing an informational picket right in front of the EMT tent next to Adobe Springs, or wherever it's set up. So I hope I don't see him there, and I hope you tell him to not come to Silver City. I got to say, too, I love Silver City, but after this, and the way the cops treated us, I felt really bad. And I just, I couldn't even look at the cops, like, in the same light ever again. And I don't think I'll ever call them again. If I need help, I'm not calling the police.
Hector Carrillo?
My name is Hector Carrillo. I am the police chief for the city of Bayard. I'm here to support the Silver City Police Chief Portillo, because I believe today's decision could have a significant impact on the community that I serve. I strongly oppose the establishment of the proposed community advisory board, as it presents several challenges that could ultimately undermine the effectiveness and integrity of our law enforcement agencies. While the community engagement is important, this advisory group introduces potential risks that may hinder law enforcement operations rather than enhance them. First, the creation of the advisory group with oversight functions could lead to misinformed recommendations that conflict with established policing best practices. Law enforcement is a highly specialized profession requiring years of training and expertise. Subjecting critical decisions to external influence from individuals unfamiliar with the policing tactics, legal procedures, and public safety protocols could result in unattended consequences that jeopardize officer's safety and operational efficiency. Second, this group could create an unnecessary layer of bureaucracy, slowing down decision-making processes that require swift and decisive action. Police departments already operate under multiple layers of oversight, including Internal Affairs Division and the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy Board Division. Adding another advisory group may lead to redundant oversight, diverting valuable resources away from frontline policing and crime prevention efforts. Finally, the presence of an advisory group could diminish officer morale. Law enforcement officers already work under intense scrutiny, and adding yet another external board to evaluate our decisions could contribute to hesitation in critical situations. Officers should feel empowered to do their jobs effectively, not burdened by the fear of undue criticism from individuals who may not fully grasp the complexities of modern-day policing. For these reasons, I urge the town to reconsider the establishment of this advisory board. Instead, I recommend strengthening existing community engagement initiatives within the police department itself, fostering dialogue through structured public forums, and enhancing training programs to address community concerns. A collaborative approach will be far more effective in promoting both public safety and trust in law enforcement. Thank you.
Mylonius Flynn-Hawkes?
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Mylonius Flynn-Hawkes. I'm 26 and a resident of Silver City. I stand here today to voice my support for Ordinance 1335, which would establish a citizens advisory board. After reading the proposed ordinance, I believe having the four designated positions, which are a mental health professional currently working in the community, two social worker professionals currently working and residing in Silver, and the person with a background in public education who is currently working directly with students in Silver, will be a positive thing for this town. With the Hila Regional Medical Center no longer having a behavioral health unit, I believe we need to focus on making sure there are other alternatives to care for the individuals who need it. Police are meant to enforce the law, but we need a wider variety of support for our community, which includes mental health services. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Bookwalter?
Good evening to everyone here, and especially those of you who have come to express your diverse opinions. This room is an embodiment of American democracy itself, and I am grateful to be a part of it. Tonight, the town council will vote on Ordinance 1335, which proposes the formation of a citizens advisory board to work with the Silver City Police Department. There have been evolving versions of this ordinance, as well as a resolution proposed by the town. For those of you who continue to oppose the ordinance, I'd like to point out a very important difference between it and the town's resolution that may have been missed. Ordinance 1335 contains language that provides a duly-appointed member of the police bargaining unit to meet with the board at guaranteed times. Here's how it goes. Sections 24 through 44, powers and duties. The board and a duly-appointed representative of the police union shall meet the first full week of January and continuing every other month and within that first full week of the month throughout the year to establish open and proactive communication with the rank-and-file members of the Silver City Police Department. Meetings may be canceled, added, or rescheduled upon mutual agreement between the board and union representative for good reason, such as no agenda items to discuss. Although the town insists that the resolution is the better way to go, nowhere in it does it grant access to the rank-and-file representation of the police officers protecting and serving this community. This hadn't occurred to us either, until police union requested it. Not a single member of our committee hesitated to grant this. In fact, we were embarrassed at not having included such an obvious need in our proposal. How can a board or a committee work towards strengthening the relationship between law enforcement and the community, not communicate with those officers who are doing the daily work of law enforcement? This was not a concession. It was a positive recognition of the need to include everyone involved. At each step along the way in meeting with town officials, whether elected or hired, we conceded every ask they made without compromising the integrity of the proposed board. Still, for all these concessions, the only positive proactive contribution that we received was from the police union itself. Rather than removing language from the ordinance... Rather than removing language from the ordinance, it added a significant source of input to the board, thus improving its effectiveness. Whether this ordinance passes tonight or not, those of us who have worked on it have been grateful to learn about citizens advisory boards and the politics of law enforcement and town management that so frequently oppose them. Going forward, we should have to, should we have to resubmit this proposal, it will be better informed by our insight into existing laws and agencies and the experience we have gathered along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Mettler.
Hello, Mayor, and Council members, and...
Ma'am, could you speak in a microphone and speak to the council?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Council, mayor, officers, code enforcement, town members. I am here because I've had a heck of a month in Silver City. And I'd say if you want to get to know police and code enforcers, work at the Commons and live on Swan Street. That's how I've got to know everybody through the years. I've been here since I was a little kid. I've seen some strange things happen on every side you can imagine. I've worked at the Commons for seven years. I'm the senior program manager there. I manage the gardens, I feed people, I run YCC programs. And in my other life, my other job, we, my family provides affordable housing for seven community members. And it was also raised by radical hippies. So, I'm just gonna say, I've, I never had so much contact with police and code. It wasn't a negative thing, but we just kind of laid low and minded our own business. And Silver City that we are in today has been extremely hard. Over this last month, I've had to call, text, whatever code enforcement. That's Manny Howdy has been involved, Vicky Tony, Thomas Hernandez, from the police, Anthony Flores, Mackenzie Spurgeon, Jonathan Singleton, and another officer that I didn't get his card. But I have these. I have a lot of cards. So it's been a really weird month. First of all, two members of our youth spray painted personal property, and then they proceeded to hit many places in our community, which isn't that cool. There's other places to do artwork in town. Then a bus parked on Texas Street. And mind you, I was raised by hippies. We did travel in a bus. These individuals cut our commercial fence with, with, I don't know, some electric power tool. They cut it down, so we had to, and they had just been cited by, I think Manny Howdy, for parking there illegally. And aside of the $2,500 damage that they did to our property, where we do house and provide low-income housing, they were dumping feces. They were just kind of doing whatever they wanted. They smashed our cactuses down, and it was getting extremely rough. And I thought, why can't they do something? Well, there's all these rules that they're bound to. And it makes it really hard when you're feeling frightened or stressed, and they say, well, we have to catch them in the act and do these things. Well, they got to catch them in the act the next week, I think, because they were in one of our properties. They had broke in and they were kind of doing whatever they wanted. They were setting up shop. And finally, we had to have detectives and officers there, and they arrested them. I wouldn't have wanted it to end that way, but that's what I needed to have happen. Because to take that upon yourself, to damage all that property, I just don't think it's a kind or friendly or peace and love thing to do. So I just want to say thank you to all the code and police officers. This is just a good story about everything that you guys have done for us, working at the Commons. There's been a, you know, we work hard to feed people. We work hard to help the community, and we can't do it without you guys. So, thank you so much.
David Stapp.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpeople. I'm gonna keep my comments very short. I'm gonna defer to others who are more eloquent than myself. I will say I am in strong favor of the development of this Citizens' Advisory Board, which is not an oversight board. I'm also very heartened to hear that Chief Portillo's office is open all the time to customers coming in. And Chief, expect to see me. I've got something to talk to you about. Thank you all. Thank everyone, even in opposing opinions. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Eddie Flotus.
Mayor, Town Council. My name is Eddie Flotus, and I'm here as a citizen with 39 and a half years of law enforcement experience. I started my career with Silver City Police Department. I'd never forget where I came from. After about four years, I went to the state police and ultimately retired as a captain here in District 12, which encompasses Grant County. Currently, and for the last 17 years, I've been chief of police at Western New Mexico University. To this day, I still handle calls, whether it's unlocking a door, or larceny, or burglary. So I, I still know what these officers go through. Born and raised in Silver City, and I'm here, most importantly, to ask you to vote no for the Citizens' Advisory Board. From my experience, which is over 39 years, I know that these boards don't often have the people on the board with enough experience, knowledge of operations, procedures, or policies to be an effective committee. Especially here in a small city like Silver City. We don't have major problems with our department. I listen to the radio every day. These officers are well-managed, from the manager all the way up to you guys. We're not like Seattle, Oakland, and more closer to home Albuquerque Police Department, who just recently came from under the Department of Justice. We're not like that. But let me tell you this. This board is simply a micromanaging tool that is politically motivated. It's tough to be an officer unless you've been in those shoes or boots and putting your life on the line and making split decisions to save somebody's life or your own, and then get chastised for it after the fact. Nobody wants to do it anymore. It's tough to recruit officers. And this is gonna make it tougher. These officers go through enough with training requirements, procedures, internal affairs, everything to be an officer. Officers don't really want to do their job anymore because they're gonna get sued. Now you're putting another layer of bureaucracy on them. When someone needs an officer, they need it now. They don't care who the officer is, they want that officer now. And that's important. If this passes, we're not gonna have officers to respond. You guys are the chain of command. There's a chain of command that needs to be followed. You guys are the Citizens' Advisory Board. You guys are elected. People come to you with complaints, and it goes down the chain. It goes from you to the mayor, mayor to the city manager, city manager to the chief, chief to the officers. That's how an effective and efficient department is run. You have the people in place. Look around. We don't have major problems. I strongly oppose you. I strongly ask you to oppose this board. You're elected. Don't let somebody else do your job. You're the Citizens' Advisory Board. And we have a great chief and a great city manager and a great Silver City Police Department. Thank you for your time.
Order, please. PJ Sturbin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Councilors, Town Staff, Chief. I, I'm here to speak to Ordinance 1335. And like the chief and like a few people in the room, I'm very much against this CAB, Citizens' Advisory Board. I've seen them in action around the country, and although the intent is to create better trust and accountability, perversely, the reverse happens. And I'd like to speak specifically to this Ordinance 1335. I think the ordinance is written is a bit pretentious, maybe a little naive. I think it's adding a bureaucracy for a small town like Silver City. Again, I'm sorry, I should have introduced myself. Peter Sturbin. I live on Chihuahua Hill. And thirdly, I believe this ordinance, as it's written, is very anti-police. So, I don't think its aspirations or expectations really meet the needs for Silver City. I have, and I'd like to speak specifically to the reasons and justifications of this Community Advisory Board, as, as written in Article 4. I'd like to speak to the composition of the board, and I'd like to speak to the powers and duties. Under the reasons and justifications, that would be on my first page, and it would be the fourth, whereas. This, this Citizens' Advisory Board creates the most efficient avenue for feedback and The most efficient, this is an ordinance for the Town of Silver City. Is that what you will vote for and agree to? It is, I, this, I would, I would point out that it's probably not the most efficient avenue. I would point out that probably the most efficient avenue is for dialogue between citizens and the town counselor and the chief. Number two.
Sir, your time is up.
Oh. I'd be happy, I, I will pass my comments to the town clerk for your review. Thank you very much for the opportunity to again speak. And please vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind the speakers again to turn your comments into the clerk so he can put them in a minute. Next is Jana Mintz.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Councilmembers, staff, and enforcement. I'm Jana Mintz. I'm a resident of the Silver Heights neighborhood and a constituent in Councilor Ben Como's district. I'm a property owner and a small business owner. I'm quoting some language from the opening to the proposed ordinance 1335 that's important to me. Whereas, a safe community is one that is based on trust between law enforcement and citizens, and this trust is strengthened by respect for feedback and a greater openness to receive and consider grievances on the part of the town. And whereas fiscal responsibility demands mitigating potential liabilities and the increased insurance premiums that come with them, and whereas this is best achieved with input from multiple and diverse perspectives. I am in favor of this ordinance, and I encourage you to vote for it. I desire to live in a safe community in which feedback from the public and a wide array of points of view are seen as assets, not threats. I would like to see the town mitigate future potential liabilities and insurance premiums that may arise, for which town residents will be responsible. Our gross receipts tax is significantly higher than any other municipality in the county, and I envision the Community Advisory Board being an influence that may prevent future increases due to town liabilities. Thank you.
Mark Van Buschirk.
Good evening. I'm a little taller than that, I guess. I'm gonna avoid some of the things that I had written down, but I was born and raised here, made my way back about five years ago, was, or I am, a licensed attorney in another state, have litigated for close to 30 years, including claims for defamation and employment. And I lost a case, this was on my list, I lost a case at the trial court, took an appeal, and lost, took an appeal to the Supreme Court and won, and it was about how to interpret a statute. And people, we all read this ordinance, and we, we have different views on what it means, but I can tell you that no one knows what it means until a judge tells you what it means. In my mind, the statute or the ordinance creates an agency relationship between the city and the board. And what that means is the city will be liable for anything this board does. So, what will happen if the board issues a report like it's supposed to, and it's also supposed to make findings, and those are supposed to be public records? If that report is inaccurate and results in defamation to an officer's reputation, results in an office, damaging an officer's either current or future employment prospects, the city could be liable for that. So I want you guys to think about that. I know we can't have a dialogue, but before you vote on it, I would also like perhaps one of the council people to tell us, if the city has submitted the proposed ordinance to the insurance carrier, whoever the city uses as their insurance carrier, and, and gotten a written assurance from the insurance carrier, that if the board does something wrong and that there are damages that the city has to pay, written assurances from the insurance company that it'll be covered under the insurance policy. I'm glad, I'm glad that PFLAG is here. I support PFLAG. I support the local chapter financially. And I'm glad to hear what happened when they wanted to speak to an officer. I, I only know of the one meeting. I'm glad that there were two meetings that an officer appeared at and spoke with a PFLAG group. That's how, that's how it should work. You should work in bringing the citizens together and the police together, not injecting another layer in between the two and keeping the two apart. So what I would ask is for the council to, I think this ordinance does more harm than good. I would ask that the council put the ordinance aside for a year, continue working on developing relationships directly between the police and, and the citizens, and don't go down the path that the ordinance will take you, which I think will expose the city to additional legal liability.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Janet Wallet Ortiz.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you all for all the good that you do for our city. Tonight, you have the opportunity to do one more good, to vote yes on the NOI 1335, to finally establish a legal Citizens' Advisory Board. My name is Janet Wallet Ortiz, and I've lived in Silver City for over 40 years. I want to publicly thank those who, for the last four years, have volunteered their hard work, hours of research and discussion, to get us to this point. Thanks to Councilor Snyder for stepping up and representing his constituents, which is his job. We all know that frustration still exists, even after past traumatic experiences. And I'm not just saying... I'm not just saying the one in two thousand sixteen, there's also one in two thousand twenty-three, and there's also ongoing frustrations, as we evidenced here tonight, and was evidenced by the young lady who spoke passionately last month during public comment about her civil rights being violated here. She said she was going to pursue her complaint with the Attorney General. I wonder what that was about? This might have been an opportunity for a C A B to hear her concerns. And if you've ever been to a domestic violence remembrance ceremony, you know that it is important to remember the history, and it is important to examine what happened, so that going forward, you don't make the same mistakes. So you have a choice before you tonight. A vote no is to cave to the falsehoods and wrong information being rumored and continue down the same myopic path of simply hoping for the best and simply hoping that there's no other catastrophe that will ever happen again in Silver City. Or you can vote yes and take us down a new path that allows insight, not oversight, by a local citizens board, and that yes includes law enforcement representation. Doing something different that further protects your constituents and our own police department from direct or inadvertent harm by the bad apples, as former councillor Ray has mentioned. So in summary, if you vote no, then you're voting and you're siding with a recent county official who publicly said, "I think that they should just let law enforcement do whatever", quote, and then be managed by the town manager. Well, we already know from past history what has happened as a result of that. And another county official just said, with regards to issues that are prevalent in larger cities, "Here in Silver City, we don't have issues." Think about those statements, both former police officers. Let law enforcement do whatever, and here in Silver City, we don't have issues? Excuse me. This is the very mentality that gave rise to the need for a legally established, unbiased, respected C A B. If you vote to approve, be aware that you are supporting a citizenry, including police officers and their families, who simply want to know that there are independent eyes watching and monitoring any issues of concern to help protect both the police and residents. Almost done. Chief Portillo himself has been quoted as saying that he would work with the C A B if that was established. Finally, C A Bs have been successful in similar places like Socorro, New Mexico. They are not to be feared if everyone is doing their job faithfully and with professionalism. After all, we pay the taxes that pay the police salaries, right? And we also pay the taxes that pay for the lawsuits, right? It's important that we have a C A B.
Ma'am, thank you. I can't read the last name, but the first name is Lorna, L O R N A. Are you still here?
You can take my time off because I'll be free. It takes you a while.
We have, we have two more public inputs after this.
Mayor Ladner, Councilwoman Connel, as friends, colleagues, and elected representatives, I thank you, I thank you very much for getting this, us all, your constituents, together, and the city hall wouldn't have worked tonight, would it? We are working with the county to do that. I think that is something all of us in Silver are proud of. I'm also grateful for the fact that, full disclosure, I've been working on this for several years as a member of A C L U, and I was very pleased to go to the detention center and find out some of the things that law enforcement is doing right. And I've never had any trouble with the cops myself, but hey, I'm old. But one thing I found out when I was there was that we are working a program of social work and the disabled, and in the detention center, we now have an opportunity to get help from our local establishment. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I support, of course, the adoption tonight. I don't think you're all there, but I hope you will get there soon. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilman, and everyone. My name is Andy Payne, I live in Silver City. And the first thing I want to say is that the citizens advisory board is not an attack on the police. It's an attempt by some very well-intentioned, thoughtful citizens to reach out and meet with the police and bond with them, to help them. Now, there's a segment in this town that has trust issues with the police department. I am not one of them. I hear many, many good things. As a matter of fact, what I hear about Chief Portillo is he's got someone's support, does such a good job, he's likely to be hired away by some other police department. And I think we have to be proactive. The next person that occupies his chair may not be as trustworthy or as honorable as he is. So I think we should be proactive and think ahead about these things. The citizens advisory board, if given the chance, will increase the trust and communication between police and help unite our community, help unite some, bring in some of those people that do have trust issues. The police department and the city councils should be viewing this advisory committee as a positive step forward and not as a threat. I don't see the dichotomy there. So please support this advisory board and give it a chance, give it a chance.
Next is Wendy Graves, and after her, I've had a request for a ten-minute courtesy break, and we will have a motion to that, and I'd like to encourage everybody to be back in their seats in ten minutes so that we can start. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Wendy Graves, and I live in Silver City. I have spoken regarding the cab proposal at a previous meeting, so I will be brief. I feel safe in Silver City, and I thank the police, their leadership, and the city leadership for that. A careful reading of this ordinance does not show any criticism of the police. The ordinance does not call for oversight, but rather calls for an advisory role. I perceive no political advantage in this, in this, no political motivation in this. Please pass the citizens advisory board as an ordinance.
Do I hear a motion for a ten-minute courtesy break?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for a ten-minute break.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will have a ten-minute break and then resume. I'm calling this meeting back to order, please. You know, I love saying the Pledge of Allegiance, but I also love the salute to the New Mexico state flag. Think about it for a minute. We salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Z E A symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Do we have perfect friendship? No, but that's a lofty goal to work toward, and that's what we're all doing here tonight. So thanks, everybody, for being here. And the next item on the agenda is number five, reports. Mr. Brown, do you have any reports?
Just real quickly, I just wanted to announce that, to remind everybody that this is Jim's last meeting. He will be retiring at the end of the month. So we have contracted with the New Mexico law firm that we've worked with before on the election issue before.
Mr. Brown, if you can't speak in there, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Jim will be leaving at the end of the month. He will be retiring. And so we've contracted with the New Mexico law firm, the firm we worked with on the election issue a little while back. And then we will be advertising for a regular full-time in-house attorney as well. So I just want to thank Jim for everything that he's done for us. We've worked with him for a long time, first as a prosecutor and then now as an in-house attorney. I just wanted to say thank you very much for everything he's done for us.
Mr. Reynolds, I want to personally thank you for all of the help you've given me. It's been really valuable, and good luck to you in the future, and I'll give council members an opportunity to say anything. Council Ben Como.
Jan, I know we've had-- Worked two months in the year and a half that I've been on the council, but the few times I've met, I really appreciate you helping me understand stuff, and I hope I wasn't two months of a born in your side. And I know that you're gonna enjoy retirement, I miss it. So take care of your health and enjoy the rest of your, rest of life. Thank you.
Council Connel.
Mr. Reynolds, I'm so sad that you're leaving. I've been on this council longer than everybody else, and I'm definitely gonna cry. It's no surprise, no shock to anyone that I did not get along well with the last attorney. When you came, you were a breath of fresh air. You have been so wise and so calm in the way you have advised us, and you are also the reason that Mr. Brown and I get along now. You were the one that permitted that for us, and so I think you've, that alone has helped the town tremendously. I'm really gonna miss you because you've helped me more than I've ever expected an attorney to help me in the past few years, but you know, if I see you walking down the street, I might have questions still, so just be warned. Thank you very much for all of your service.
Any other council comments?
I've just worked with you a little while, Mr. Reynolds, and I've appreciated your advice, and thank you very much.
Councilor Press.
Well, we have had great philosophical debates and talks over what sort of the ideals are that we've had with government. I've never doubted your commitment to this community, and I always love seeing you around town. I recommend still keeping up with your ten thousand steps, and even though it won't be to walk to work that much, I do want to say I hope to see you out and about that in the days. Feel free to reach out anytime, and thank you so much for all that you've done for us.
Thanks again, Mr. Reynolds, for the tremendous job that you've done for Silver City. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to announce, as of yesterday, I removed the acting from the acting city manager's position. So she is now the assistant city manager, Jackie.
Anything else, Mr. Brown? Thank you. Next on the agenda is number nine, public hearing, and we have one regarding S V slash P V twenty-five dash oh one. Request authorization, the vacation of a twenty point two seven square foot portion of Sixth Street adjacent to property addressed as five eleven North Black Street, legally described as subdivision Fraser Block, one thirty-four Lot Nine, and Lot Eleven and Lots Thirteen and Lot Fifteen, North Fifteen Minutes, Lot Nine. The applicant is Kathleen Cole, but I think Dan Cook will be representing her here tonight. Is that right? Okay. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had any exhortate discussions with any--
Yes. I talked with Ms. Cole before this came about on the phone and some texts regarding procedures for the vacation process, and I did talk with Jackie Oliva as well and relayed the message back to Ms. Cole.
Okay. So does any council member have any problem with that explanation? Okay, thank you, Councilor Snyder. Have any other members of this hearing board had any exhortate discussions? Okay. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or will be available for questioning, please rise to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Jackie Oliva.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That the testimony that I'm about to give--
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but--
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Under the penalty of perjury.
Under the penalty of perjury.
Thank you. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the matter being brought before the council based upon the application or actions taken below. Then the proponent, the applicant, shall present its case. Will the town staff come forward and present a brief synopsis of the matter pursuant to this application?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. So we were approached by Mrs. Kathleen Cole and Mr. Theron Cole. They are in the process of trying to sell their home. They have currently relocated to another state, and they previously owned the property. They bought it in nineteen ninety-nine, and during that time, they didn't require a lender for the property. So during the lending process, there's a lot of vetting to the property that happens. So whenever she put it up for sale this most recent time, the individual that was trying to buy the house was going through a lender, and the lender identified that the stem wall of the home encroaches on the right-of-way by eighteen inches by like twenty feet. And so since that could cause an issue with who has authority over the property, it is in the best interest of the applicant to get that fully in her possession to be able to sell the property, because it has proved as an issue with the lending process to which the first sale that they had fell through. So we did vet all of the department heads within the town, including Public Works, Code Enforcement, Utility, Fire, Police, Engineering, and Meters Divisions, and they had no comment about the proposed vacation. And as required by section six point two point eleven of the Land Use Code, community development, as well as the applicant, reached out to every property owner within three hundred feet of the subject property to inform them of this application. The community development department had one letter that was returned as undeliverable and unable to forward. We received no other input. The representative for Mr. Kathleen and Mr. Theron Cole and Mrs. Kathleen Cole did not receive any responses pertinent to the proposal, aside from the fact that someone said that they weren't even close to the property and they were informed. So I did look at the people who were informed, and they were within three hundred-foot notification area. There are four findings required whenever a vacation happens, to which the first is the street right-of-way is located within the municipal limits of town and is dedicated and maintained by the town. The requested vacation conforms with the town's comprehensive plan. So, I did look at the people who were informed, and they were within 300-foot notification area. There are four findings required whenever a vacation happens, to which the first is, the street right-of-way is located within the municipal limits of town and is dedicated and maintained by the town. The requested vacation conforms with the town's comprehensive plan, land use code, and any relevant policies adopted by the town. And the proposed vacation does not endanger health, safety, or general welfare to the community. And the town has no current or future need for the street right-of-way for the proposed vacation. So, the sidewalk is completely developed already, and none of this vacation will include any of the developed sidewalk. So, if the town ever had to go in and do any maintenance or anything on the area, it would not impede on that right. And the property needs to be sold at appraised value, which we did have to get an appraiser, and it appraised at $73. So, during that process, they also have to pay any fees associated with that, so it would include the appraisal fees as well. It is the recommendation of the Community Development Department that this application pass by finding all of, meeting of all the four findings as required. If you have any questions for me, I am available.
Any questions? Yes.
So, just confirming on that one, we don't have any utility lines that we're concerned about that are buried underneath this. And this came in from construction, original construction in 1883?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. So, this house was constructed in 1883, so no utilities are under the current stem wall. They're all within the platted right-of-way as it sits, not this 20 or so square feet.
Perfect. Due diligence. Thank you.
Mr. Cook, you're representing the Coles. Would you like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Haidner and council, for giving me the opportunity. I'm the broker-owner of Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate. We've represented Mr. and Mrs. Cole to sell their home. It's been a little bit of a hardship for them, finding out that there's an easement that exists. This home's existed since 1883. There's never been an issue with it. It's hard to suppose that it's been all cash deals up until this last buyer. And you can see that a lender is just trying to protect their interest, and that interest being the collateral, the home itself. They want to ensure that they will get insurance that nobody's going to come along and say, "Your living room wall is in a right-of-way or an easement or whatever." You're going to have to move that living room wall. That wall bears the load and structure of the roof. It'd really be a major, major project to move that. I'm a visual person, so I'll give you an idea. I'm guessing these squares on the floor are 24 inches. So, we're talking about almost 18 inches. Maybe half of one of these squares, a little bit more than half, about this wide. About the width of a living room, a normal living room between these desks. Just to give you a visual, that's the part that is going to be vacated. That will ensure to a lender, to any new buyer, that nobody's going to come along and say, "That needs to be demolished and removed and replaced." So, we've been at this since, we went under contract October 29th to start this process. Now, that starts with getting a survey. That survey let us know that, whoops, we see an encroachment going on to city property. So, that's what we're here to hopefully come to a resolution with today. And we were lucky that we got a new buyer to step in after our buyer terminated, let's see, February 27th. Very prominent business owner in the community that appreciates historic homes. Just couldn't wait that long. It was like, we don't know if this will ever get resolved. So, they terminated their agreement. We've got a new buyer, so that's all I really want to add. Is anything else, any other questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Does that include your total presentation? Thank you. Normally, I would ask if there was anyone opposed to this, but since no one else was sworn in, that's a mute issue. Is the Hearing Board prepared to consider this application and render its decision? Councilor Kano?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of SV/PV 25-01, authorizing the vacation of a 20.27-square-foot portion of Sixth Street adjacent to the property addressed as 511-North Black Street, legally described as subdivision Fraser Block 134-Lot 9 and Lot 11 and Lot 13 and Lot 15-North 15 Degrees Lot 9. And this will be based on the following findings. Number one, the street right-of-way is located within municipal limits of the town and is dedicated to and maintained by the town. And number two, the requested vacation conforms to the town's comprehensive plan, the land use code, and any relevant policies adopted by the town. And number three, the proposed vacation does not endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the community. And number four, the town has no current or future need for the street right-of-way proposed for the vacation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Prince.
I'll second that motion as stated.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Councilor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Aye.
Councilor Condo.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and this public hearing is concluded. Next is Item 10, unfinished business, and there is none. Next is Item 11, new business. The approval/disapproval of Resolution 2025-11A, Resolution Vacating A Portion Of West Sixth Street Of Way Adjoring Lot 15, Block 134, Fraser Survey Of The Town Of Silver City, New Mexico. Ms. Oliva.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This is the sister resolution of what has just passed. So, this is the ordaining of this area to no longer be owned by the town. If you have any questions regarding it...
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Prince.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-11, a resolution vacating a portion of West Sixth Street right-of-way adjoining Lot 15, Block 134, Fraser Survey of The Town Of Silver City, New Mexico.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Ben Como.
I'll second that statement.
Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo. Mr. Reynolds, is there a problem?
No.
Okay.
Councilor Ben Como. Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Aye.
Councilor Condo.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 11B, the approval/disapproval of Resolution 2025-12, a resolution to acquire and retransfer federal property for homeless suit availability purposes. Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This resolution is brought before you based off of a notice that we received from the General Services Department of the federal government. They have deemed the, that's the Sergeant James Alphilips U.S. Army Reserve Center located at 500 East Pine Street as federal surplus property. And through that federal surplus, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has deemed it suitable for homeless use. They've notified local governments, as well as the school districts, that this property can only be used for homeless suitability purposes. And the town has worked with, preliminary worked with the school districts, the Southwest Council of Governments, and the Western Regional Housing Authority to try to identify a meaningful project that we could use this property for. Our intent is to submit a proposal to the federal government to use this property as transitional housing for the students and their families under the McKenney-Bento program. This is super preliminary, and this resolution is a requirement by the federal government under the Part 1 of their application process. And if deemed acceptable by it, then we would proceed into the next phase of their application process to either lease or acquire this property.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any questions? Councilor Kano.
Is that a question, is that a comment? I support this 100%, and I'm very thankful to all of the town staff that has been working on this. This is a great partnership with us and the school board and the school district. I think this is something that's going to really affect a lot of our families, and it's really a good thing for the community. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Prince.
Just want to echo Councilwoman Condo's comments on that one. The crises that we've been having to hear from, both on the side of the school district as well as of our constituents, finding housing right now has been so difficult. And this effort especially helps out our community in so many wonderful ways. Thank you for the prioritization of this.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Kano.
Mr. Mayor, I do approve Resolution 2025-12, a resolution to acquire and retransfer federal property for homeless suitability purposes.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Prince.
Second. The motion is stated.
Motion second. Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Councilor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Aye.
Councilor Condo.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 11C, approval/disapproval of Resolution 2025-13, a resolution by the governing body of the Town Of Silver City, New Mexico, whereby authorizes filing of application and necessary documents for funding assistance through the New Mexico Interstate Stream Commission, NMISC, for funding from the New Mexico Unit Fund for Water Utilization Projects in the southwest planning region of Katherine, Grant, Hidalgo, and Luna Counties, and a commitment to the operation and maintenance of the project. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council. This application is, if awarded, is, we would use the funding to complete an asset management plan. So, we started an asset management plan back in 2018, but due to COVID, the ball was dropped, and we didn't complete it. They can be quite expensive, in the range of $150,000 to $200,000. This grant does not require any match. So, this is actually the first grant application process for the ISC cap funding. This is from the Arizona Water Settlement funding that the ISC is overseeing. And so, with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown, will the other counties mentioned here, do they have to do a similar resolution?
Yeah, this first, yes. This first, this is the very first grant application process through this program. And it is only open to communities within Katherine, Grant, Hidalgo, and Luna Counties. This first preliminary application is only for planning or design projects. The first full-blown grant application process for plan, design, and construction will actually happen in June of this year. And then, after that, every June after that.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ben Como.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2025-13, a resolution by the governing body of the Town Of Silver City, New Mexico, whereby authorizes filing an application and necessary documents for funding assistance through the New Mexico Interstate Commission for funding from the New Mexico Unit Fund for Water Utilization Projects in the southwest planning region of Katherine, Grant, Hidalgo, and Luna Counties, and a commitment to the operation and maintenance of the project.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Snyder.
I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Councilor Ben Como.
Aye.
Councilor Prince.
Aye.
Councilor Snyder.
Aye.
Councilor Condo.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is agenda Item 11D, the approval/disapproval of a notice of intent of Ordinance 1335, and ordinance amending Chapter 24 Law Enforcement by adding Article 4, Community Advisory Board, Section 24-40 through 24-44 of the Municipal Code of the Town Of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. Councilor Snyder, would you like to make your comments? Councilor Snyder is the sponsor of this ordinance.
Ordinance 1335 for Citizens Advisory Board has had more research and discussion than most ordinances. The Citizens for Community and Safety have been working on it for over four years. There has been a work session on the ordinance where a subcommittee was formed consisting of two representatives from the Citizens of Community and Safety, two representatives from the police union, and two town councilor. The town subcommittee met twice. This ordinance has incorporated suggestions and improvements from these meetings in the ordinance. The ordinance consists of a seven-board member. It allows for training of board members. The board will meet monthly with representatives of the police union, and has a process where concerns with the police can be heard and filed through the board while meeting confidentiality requirements and police and town procedures. The ordinance will be reviewed and assessed in two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilor Snyder? Councilor Kano?
I don't have questions, but I have comments.
Pardon?
I don't have any questions, but I have comments.
Yes.
I have a lot to say about this. I was approached about this many years ago, I guess at least four years ago. And at the beginning, I believed in it. And then, we got the ordinance, and the ordinance was, had a lot of, I had a lot of issues with it. So, I became part of this committee. In the time I've been in office, fighting compromise has been really important to me for everything. I see former Councilor Ray here. You can ask him how many times he and I disagreed and tried to find a middle ground. Do the same thing with Councilor Ben Como on a regular basis. This was somewhere where I thought we could find middle ground. So, that's why I agreed to be on that subcommittee and work on it. At one point, there was some middle ground because both the town administration, the chief of police, police union, all said, "If it's a resolution, we'll figure it out. We'll work on it." That was something that they brought publicly. They brought it to our subcommittee meetings, and it was denied, completely denied. Then, in our last subcommittee meeting, we had a detective who is in this room, if you need to ask him about it later, come to our meeting. And he explained exactly why this was going to be a problem for the members of his department, how it was going to affect morale, how it was going to affect their mental health, how it was going to affect their time spent doing paperwork and other things. He too asked for that resolution instead of the ordinance. And again, denied. So, I found myself at a different place, deciding that this may not be the best thing for us right now. Okay? This ordinance has brought, I don't know if anyone else has received them, but more threats, more ugly comments, more hate than any other ordinance that I've dealt with in 12 years. It's really sad to me, especially given the importance of this process and the importance of this ordinance. Never have I received so many threats as an elected official. Most of the threats were if I didn't vote a certain way, I would be removed from office, which, I mean, that's up to the voters. For me, it's really important, though, that everyone here one of those threats. I was recently at the Democratic Party meeting on May 12th of this year, where there was a presentation about the CAB. It was a public meeting. And this Democratic Party has always been a public meeting, although they have just recently changed it to just Democrats. It's from that public meeting. And if you don't recognize the voice, the speaker is Sharon Book Walter. Yeah, excuse me. I need to get it to start. Hold on, let me find it. Okay. It's a little before that starts, but...
I think that, you know, we'd rather, last count, we have two people on the council who were in favor of the board, two who were, the ordinance, two who were opposed to it. The mayor was opposed to it. And that would mean that it would not, it would not pass. And there's a good chance that it won't pass. But what we, you know, what we plan to do, we should have passed at this point, is that we would, you know, we would work on it more, try to do better, and then make certain that those positions that are open in city government, you know, November, are filled by people who support an ordinance that establishes a board.
So, clearly, there are those of you who agree with that statement, and that's perfectly fine. You know, everyone has their opinions. fine, you know, everyone has their opinions. But what I want to share is something that I was told by one of my mentor mayors the very first day that I went to training at Municipal League. As you know, Municipal League is a nonpartisan organization because we're supposed to be nonpartisan. And what he shared is something that I've lived with ever since he said it, the entire time I've been in office. He said, "My job is not to keep my job, my job is to do my job. Tonight, my job is to vote no on this ordinance because in the current form, it is not good for our town."
Thank you. Any other?
I'd like to make a comment. There, there's four cities that I know of in New Mexico that have an advisory board. It's Carlsbad, Socorro, Albuquerque, and Santa Fe. And all of those have been established through an ordinance. And the thing about an ordinance is that it, it is a law, and it will be, be followed. In order for this ordinance to function to its fullest, we need to have it be a law, and that's why it is an ordinance.
Counselor Bencomo?
I, I've heard plenty of this over the last month or so, those for it, those against it. I think it's time to put this issue to bed, and I am not in support of it.
One of the hardest parts in my now-fourth year on the council is when I have constituents come to me with concerns, particularly underneath the departments that we have in our city. And having tried to work through the chain of command with the city, I've been stonewalled, I've had footage withheld, been accused of terrible things, and of all the comments that I've received, of all the emails I've received, of all the calls I've received, tonight, I clocked it with three people who had specifics of the actual ordinance. For folks that reached out to me, and we had dozens in my inbox, when I went back to ask what particularly of this ordinance needed to be changed or revised, I feel we moved through that process with the workshopping. And I wish to thank the officers involved, the FOP, the POA, and I want to make sure then that two of the CSC. I have seen so much great work come in for this here. Please do keep up the good work. Our democracy requires the engagement of intelligent citizenry, and especially compassionate citizenry. I have genuine concerns and fears about what our current process is, and I really, really hope that just by us even discussing this, this is going to be enough to be able to allay those, and that folks know that, hey, this is something that is not going to go away. I am concerned that it's not an if, but when we have another tragedy come through this department. It's fundamental, we're never going to make it out of having a problem-free world. But I just want to make sure then that the public knows that there are bodies that are able to address these concerns. I hope we can get there someday. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Prince?
I move we approve Notice of Intent for Ordinance Thirteen Thirty-Five, and ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Four Law Enforcement by adding Article Four, Community Advisory Board, Sections Twenty-Four Dash Forty Through Twenty-Four Dash Forty-Four of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
Is there a second?
I second.
Counselor Snyder, we have a motion and a second. Mister Clark, will you do a roll call, please?
Counselor Bencomo.
Nay.
Counselor Prince.
Aye.
Counselor Snyder.
Aye.
Counselor Connaughton.
Nay.
Before I vote, I would like to make a few comments. I, we're split, fifty-fifty, obviously, and the phone calls that I've received, about half were in favor and another half was against. The comments tonight is pretty close, I think, to the same ratio. We heard a lot of people opposed and a lot of people in favor of it. Over the course of several council meetings, I've expressed concern about a couple of things in, in, in the way the, the board is set up. None of those would be reason for me to discard it. I've also talked to our attorney, Mr. Reynolds, and he's pointed out a couple of things to me as well. But my concern goes beyond that to a more global nature. I know other communities might have this kind of a board, but we're not other communities. We have a charter. And in our charter, the city manager is given the sole responsibility to run the town, and individual council members are prohibited from interfering with this duty. However, the city council hires and fires the manager. It is the duty of the council, acting as a whole, to evaluate the manager's performance and make course corrections as needed. It is the role of the city manager to provide responsible oversight of all departments, including the police department. It is his responsibility, working with the police chief, to ensure that that department functions as it should. The role of the city council is to provide oversight of the city manager. This is a crucial role. For example, the recent issues at a local university suggest what can happen when a board of regents does not provide adequate oversight of the university president. So, if you want to make the analogy of councillors to board a region, and the president of the university to the city manager, I think that's a good correlation. When the idea of a police advisory board first came up, there was a lot of concern expressed by some that this committee would be having oversight of the police department. Obviously, this wasn't the intent of those who created this NOI. However, no matter how you spin it, in my opinion, this advisory committee will interfere with the role of the city manager as he manages the city. And the council must give oversight over the city manager, and without adequate oversight, the city is, is doomed in terms of administration. So, I am hoping that the council will begin to create an evaluation instrument that will allow the oversight needed to make sure that all city departments, including the police department, will function properly. I have met recently with Police Chief Portillo, and he has assured me that he will soon unveil a new program, a program which will address the concerns of many citizens that I've heard from, that they will be able to meet with him personally, and he will provide an atmosphere where citizens will be at ease to express their opinions to him in person. I want to give the chief the opportunity to make this happen. I know that those who worked so really, really hard on this, on this board will be disappointed. But let me assure you that your work is not in vain because you have raised questions and issues that some of our community members have with the policing in our community. I want to give Police Chief Portillo an opportunity to turn things around from these opinions, whether warranted or not, and I'm asking you to give him an opportunity to do so. I am putting my trust in you, Police Chief Portillo. Please don't let me down, and I will vote nay on this ordinance. I will have the police chief escort anyone out that doesn't come to order. Counsel, Counselor, uh. Sadeo, would you do official roll call?
Yes, sir. Counselor Bencomo.
Nay.
Counselor Prince.
Aye.
Counselor Snyder.
Aye.
Counselor Connaughton.
Nay.
And as mayor, I break the tie with a nay vote. Next is Agenda Item Eleven D, the approval slash disapproval of a notice of intent of Ordinance Thirteen Thirty-Five, and ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Four Law Enforcement by adding Article Four, Community Advisory, oh, I'm sorry, reading the wrong one. Next is Agenda Item Eleven E, the approval slash disapproval of a notice of intent of Ordinance Thirteen Thirty-Six, and ordinance amending the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, by amendment to Chapter One, General provisions, Section One Through Two, definitions and rules of construction, Chapter Forty-two, streets and sidewalks, Article One and General Section Forty-two Dash Nine, and Article Four, obstructions and encroachments, Section Forty-two Dash Eighty, obstructions restricted. And I want to thank Mr. Reynolds for working hard on this, on this NOI as well as the next one, and I'll give the time to him to talk a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. This ordinance, Thirteen Thirty-Six, it demands Sections Forty-two Dash Eighty and a little bit on Forty-two Dash Nine. It also adds a definition to our code that was missing on right-ofways, right-ofways, the code refers to right-ofways, but it was never defined in the code. So, we have a definition now. Basically, this amendment addresses the problems that code enforcement has encountered, and that problem is people, you know, placing objects on or change, actually changing town property, which could lead, and a lot of times does lead, to hazards that would be faced by our citizens. And the code does not give them the authority to address those hazards. We really don't have the authority with, people want to place things on town property to prevent them from doing so. A few examples, people put up advertising and campaign signs on various town right-ofways and other town property. Again, without Ordinance Thirteen Thirty-Six, we have no, well, limited means to prevent that. And again, putting up these signs, whether they're business signs or during election time, campaign signs, they can restrict the view of traffic, the line of view that traffic faces, and causing a hazard in that manner. Or people stepping out from them and maybe cars don't see them, again, a hazard for pedestrians. And a matter that's still ongoing, that somebody, that, that was mentioned, we've had an automobile, a bus, parked on, on town property, and the person proceeded to put their goods for sale in the street. And code enforcement approached him, he told them, basically buzz off. We did cite him, code enforcement did cite him under the nuisance ordinance, but you still have to prove that that's a nuisance. This is a more straightforward manner of saying, you can't put things on town property unless it's provided by in the code or you get approval from the town manager. Another example, the county faced a situation where a subdivision put a boulder on property next to the subdivision, but it was on county property. The county had no ordinance like this to prevent people placing objects and things on county property. So, that, that big rack, boulder, is what we call an attractive nuisance in law, that can, in law, that can attract children climbing on it. Again, it prevents, it presents a liability issue. The county and the subdivision worked out a deal where the subdivision would assume liability, but those kind of agreements in a court of law can be set aside by the judge, especially if a child is injured, as against public policy. So, that's not the best way to handle it. So, we have amended in Thirteen Thirty-Six, basically that no one, this is in Forty-two Eighty, can obstruct, encroach upon, place any object, article, or thing on any street, sidewalk, right-ofway, or any other town property. This gives the town, unless it's permitted by ordinance, or they get approval from the town manager. So, those are the exceptions. It does have other exceptions, of course, motor vehicles on streets, benches, including chairs, small table, planters in the historic downtown area, people put out planters, they put out benches, all those are exempt. Bicycle, scooters that are parked, but do not obstruct the sidewalk. And merchants can put out, you know, have sales or put out their, their sandwich advertising signs, again, so long as they do not obstruct access in the town right-ofway. So, again, this gives the town the ability to, or we don't have people putting things in the street and selling them and saying, you know, take a hike. It provides the town with the means of protecting its property and protecting the citizens.
Any questions for Mr. Reynolds? Counselor Snyder?
I, on the obstruction and encroachments that went on with that section where things were not applied, in, on that section with benches, chairs, tables, and planters, it says they can be removed if they are not maintained? And would the business owner be cited, or would they just be removed, or how would that work?
Well, it just says so long, that they are permitted so long as they are maintained. I mean, I saw a planter that was basically falling apart. Again, if that represents a hazard to people, that it's falling apart, then code enforcement would approach, it doesn't say they can remove it, they can approach the, the owner and try to get compliance. That's always the first thing code enforcement always does, is approach the person and try to get compliance.
Any other questions, Counselor Prince?
Thank you, Mayor London. And just to make sure that folks understand, aside from, of course, people that are doing their hocking on the sidewalks and streets, what I typically see in my neighborhood is going to be yard sales. Just want to make sure then that, still permitted, totally fine to be able to host a yard sale as long as it only stretches up towards curb, gutter, street, just where town property is being listed right now, which basically ends at the curb, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it goes to the sidewalk, so they can't block sidewalks, but they can go, you can have stuff on the sidewalk so long as it doesn't block access.
Just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Brown?
No, I was, I was just going to clarify that. So, you may have a town right-ofway behind the sidewalk, it's okay to do that, but not the sidewalk.
If you have a sidewalk, you can go up to the sidewalk. If you don't have a sidewalk, goes up to the curb. Okay. And then, I'm just making sure, you know, the line that we have, Forty-two Dash Nine, page two, Forty-two Dash Nine, subsection B, all such authorized improvements, and this is for curbs, gutters, street surface, sidewalks, and driveways. All such authorized improvements shall be to town standards. In my district, we have everything from the Ursa unpaved roads all the way through to fully developed sidewalks in front of Jose Barrios and stretching across to the parks. Different neighborhoods have kind of different characteristics, and I was just wondering if there was going to be any way then to maintain those characteristics we're in. It's not going to scare people off from making improvements if we don't have a standard set of, if we don't have our standards listed inside of this ordinance here.
Yes, usually you find standards in, in the land use code, though there, there is some flexibility because land use code basically has to do with put-in sidewalks, you know, cement sidewalks, streets, gutters, and things of that nature. We've had, had situations like a fellow was developing some property, the roads were not paved, and we, development, community development did not require him to pave those roads. Again, they gave him approval to develop it based on, based on the conditions of, of the subdivision.
So, just making sure then that that language will line up, that with town manager as well as any designee, just want to make sure then that we're not binding people to massive block redevelopments with folks that don't have the resources for it. We have the ability to go for funding on that for things like community development block grants, if we want to work on an entire neighborhood or. block grants, if we want to work on an entire neighborhood or work through some of the sub streets that we have, but I just want to make sure then that we're not creating an undue burden then when folks just need to do some basic maintenance on their properties.
Basically, as long, it's to town standards, and to me, what that means, town standards at the time of your construction. So, you know, I'm not going to, if you're doing an upgrade to your front yard, your right-ofway, and you have a chip seal street with no sidewalk, the town is not going to require you to install a pavement street with a curb, gutter, and sidewalk while the rest of your neighbors have nothing. So basically, you know, it's up to the standards of, of the time when you, it was constructed, unless the town is going to come up and do like a CDBG project that we're working on right now. We're upgrading the entire infrastructure of the entire neighborhood, so any changes after that, they would have to meet town standards at that time.
Just want to make sure we have that on the minutes and we have some clarity on that. Thank you.
And that language has been, it's not being changed, it's been in the ordinance since two thousand and seven, and there hasn't been, been a problem.
Counselor Connor, you had any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
I, I think that's important that we approve this. I know that, I think people are not aware, I've seen where people, for some reason, think it's okay to lay concrete rabs from the street to the curb, and it helps to, in, in many cases, try to drive their RV trailer up there, it's more accessible. And I think most people are not aware that you have to, they have to get prior approval from the city manager, first of all, if it's something that they want and consider doing. So I've seen a lot of that in the past, and I think people generally think that if they see an empty lot, that there's no problem, they're not aware it belongs to city, that it's city property, that they need to be informed, that if they need to put a sign or it's not causing a public safety issue, that they have to get permission from the city manager, so.
Any other comments? Ms. Zalek, go ahead.
Thank you. Also, we often see if like what we call a paper street for roads that aren't developed necessarily, and, and somebody might buy it, and, you know, they want to get access to that, which they have every right to because it's abutting a right-ofway, but sometimes we see people putting up fences on that property, and then there's other properties that are bought by somebody else down the road that now they have reduced their access because there's a fence across where they have legal right-ofway to be able to access their property. So that's something else that we see too, in the community development department as well as code enforcement. So we just want to ensure that everybody has equal rights to the road, that, you know, what it is used for is for pedestrian right-ofway as well as for vehicular right-ofway, and to ensure that that is always maintained, and the safety of people and vehicles are, are always paramount. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor.
Counselor Ben Coleman.
I move to approve a notice of intent of ordinance thirteen thirty-six and ordinance amending the municipal code of the town of Silver City, New Mexico by amendment to chapter one, general provisions, sections one dash two, definitions and rules of construction, chapter forty-two, streets and sidewalks, article one in general, section forty-two dash nine, and article four, obstructions and encroachments, section forty-two dash eighty, obstructions restricted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Connor?
I'll second that motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Counselor Ben Coleman.
Aye.
Counselor Prince.
Aye.
Counselor Snyder.
Aye.
Counselor Connor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is agenda item eleven F, the approval slash disapproval of notice of intent of ordinance thirteen thirty-seven and ordinance amending the municipal code of the town of Silver City, New Mexico by amendment to chapter thirty-six, parks and recreation, article two, conduct in parks, section thirty-six dash twenty-two, prohibited acts.
This is another issue that has been brought to our attention by code enforcement. They are, they are very busy people, so we should commend them. But this section thirty-six twenty-two has prohibited a number of prohibited acts that you can't do in parks. You can't dump and start fires unless there's a fireplace, you can endanger the safety of others, you can't violate the rules of the park, camp or lodge within the park premises. So code enforcement came to me and said, what about trails and open spaces? We can enforce these prohibitions in parks, but really doesn't give us any authority to enforce them in town, especially open spaces. We've had people camp on open spaces up there, a lot of trash, things of that nature. So it, it was an easy fix. All we did was add a phrase at the end of section A, and it's not even a complete sentence, it just says, the term park or facilities shall also include all town trails and open spaces. So these prohibited acts, I mean, this ordinance has been ineffective, I looked it up since nineteen eighty-nine with very little changes, so it just makes it clear that code enforcement can enforce this ordinance on town trails and open spaces also.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Reynolds, Counselor Prince?
Three major points that I just want to see addressed, we can do them all at once or just one at a time. On page two, item three, underneath prohibited acts, disturb the peace or use any language that would qualify as fighting words. The term fighting words means written or spoken words generally expressed to incite hatred or violence, and to place the targets of the words in danger of harm. I know that we can't scream fire in a crowded theater, you know, there needs to be like clear imminent threat and harm. It's just doing any kind of legislation that's going to affect or have another kind of he-said, she-said type of back and forth. I just don't know if being able to restrict language is something that's appropriate for this.
Well, it's been in there since nineteen eighty-nine. Fighting words, there's a Supreme Court case, fighting words do not have First Amendment protection.
Right, incitements of violence, as I understand, did that present imminent?
If I could finish.
Okay.
In Chaplinsky versus New Hampshire, the court unanimously sustained a state law prescribing fighting words. That is, words that have a direct tendency to cause acts of violence by, by the person to whom individually the remarks are addressed. The court further explained that by their very utterance, fighting words inflict injury and tend to incite and immediate breach of the peace. Chaplinsky still remains viable for the principle that states are free to ban simple use without a demonstration of additional justifying circumstances of so-called fighting words. Those personally abusive epithets, when addressed to ordinary citizens, are, as a matter of common knowledge, inherently likely to provoke violent reaction. Quoting from the case, there are certain well-defined and narrow-limited classes of speech, the prevention of punishment of which has never been thought to raise any constitutional problem. These include lewd and obscene, the profane, racial appetites, the liablest, and insulting or fighting words, which by their very utterance inflict injury and tend to incite an immediate breach of the peace. So that's why that's been included in there, they're constitutionally prohibited. Whether you want to continue, that provision in here is, is up to the council.
Thank you.
Any other, Counselor Prince?
Second, I just want to concern, item eight, same page, page two, prohibited acts prevent any person from using any park or any of its facilities or interfere with such use in compliance with this article and the rules applicable to such use. Example that I think of is in Virginia Street Park, most Sundays we have a birthday party, and presumably folks that are using some of the picnic tables to have cake on, be able to host with, that is preventing other folks from utilizing those spaces, but kind of first come, first served, if there are folks that are in there, whether or not they've reserved the park, it's just a public gathering then, this isn't going to prevent them from being able to continue with any of the reservations.
No, I mean, it's like you stake out your picnic spot and lay a blanket, that doesn't prevent other people from going to other areas or other parks. I mean, this talks, this is an actual prevention of people, stopping them from using the facilities.
Just want to make sure on that one, just in case somebody comes in saying that, the park is free and open for everyone to use, and I want to sit at this table right now, just want to make sure we have something hit it off on that. And then finally, just item fourteen on page three, the use of any wheeled vehicle or skateboard in violation of the rules and regulations promulgated by the town manager. Folks who skateboard will sometimes use flat concrete or asphalt surfaces that we have in the parks. The basketball court's built to be used as a basketball court, but if some kid wants to pop some ollies or do some kickflips using that portion there, they're not going to have to deal with enforcement at that point, as long as they're not interfering with any other public use of the facility.
Well, as long as they're not in violation of any rules or regulations promulgated by the town manager.
And we don't have a straight ban, we have, we're not doing skateboards on the sidewalks after this year's ordinance is, but if kids are, are going to be skateboarding through the parks, on sidewalks, in the parks?
No.
Just want to make sure. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion, Counselor Snyder?
I move to approve a notice of intent of ordinance thirteen thirty-seven and ordinance amending the municipal code of the town of Silver City, New Mexico by the amendment to chapter thirty-six, park and recreation, article two, conduct in parks, section thirty-six dash twenty-two, prohibited acts.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadio.
Counselor Ben Coleman.
Aye.
Counselor Prince.
Aye.
Counselor Snyder.
Aye.
Counselor Connor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to do something I've never done before. Before I do that, I want to also thank code enforcement for being involved in this whole process as well. I recognize a man I've known for many years, he was once associate superintendent of the Silver School District, Mr. Fred Vega. He, he did a lot of great things at the high school level, and I just want to recognize him here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Vega, for being here. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Prince?
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We hereby adjourn.